Tuesday, April 18th, 2017, I call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Council Joseph, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Kusmerich.
President.
Councilor Bean, Councilor Boishman.
Here.
Councilor Beazell.
Present.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Donnelly.
Here.
Councilor Green, here.
Councilor Joseph.
Here.
Councilor Caddy.
Yeah.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, if there are no-
I can speak on a petition, should I speak now or then?
Now would be your opportunity.
Okay.
Amy.
Sam Squalia.
Amy.
Two twenty-five Scott Rowe.
I'm speaking to petition one oh-two dash seventeen. This is Councilor Dean Tran and Samantha Squalia to designate a no parking loading zone space between twenty-three and twenty-seven Lunenburg Street and designate two-hour parking between eight AM and eight PM from Morin Square Apartments to twenty-three Lunenburg Street to accommodate businesses and patrons. So, you know that the Zapata New Mexican Restaurant that just opened on Monday, they have, on Lunenburg Street, there is a series of parking spaces that are no parking, loading zone only. So, people park there anyway regardless, and it would be beneficial to have those spaces to be available and signage appropriate so that the general public knows that they can park there safely without getting ticketed. And Jody, I speak to Jody Joseph about this, and he said that he got them to not ticket them, not ticket the cars as they were adequate parking spaces in the past, but there was an issue with Suborn Hardware not wanting them to change it from the loading zone. So, I don't know if you've received this plan, but there is a proposed plan of a series of loading zone parking spaces and proposed two-hour, eight AM to eight PM parking spaces. These are, I have eight on the proposed layout that would be from eight AM to eight PM. So, this is to benefit the businesses, but also after eight PM, this would be able to benefit the Morin Square Realty, which has about three or four apartment buildings that has residents that fill up this lot, which right now, as you can see, this lot is-
Ms. Squalia, I don't want to interrupt you, you'll have the opportunity. This was actually set to be referred to the Public Safety Committee, so this will be coming to the Public Safety Committee and then back before the council in subsequent meetings, so I'd hate to have you repeat yourself-
I can repeat.
-multiple times, so-
But I am in favor of this petition-
Thank you.
...in support of the Liberty Pizza, the Laundromat, and the Zapata Restaurant.
Stay tuned for the Public Safety Committee.
All right, thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public forum at this time?
Can I just-
Council Joseph.
I just, I'm sorry, I just need to clarify. My discussion with the police department was that a no loadings, a loading zone is in effect between the hours of eight AM and four PM, okay? Not after four PM. I never made any arrangements to have people park there in a loading zone during the day when it's not, when it's not possible, but I was told by the police department that the loading zone ordinance is only in effect from eight AM to four PM. I didn't make any special arrangements.
Thank you for your clarification, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor.
There are no objections at this time. We'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, Council Bean.
President, the committee met tonight with one appointment. It was a appointment from Mr. Amber McCormick, the Board of Trustees for the Public Library, term expires January first, 2020. It was approved unanimously by the committee.
I should approve the Appointments Committee report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records and there appear to be no other-
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have two letters of appointment this evening, Counselors. First appointment, Mr. Calvin Brooks as the City Auditor for a term of three years with an expiration date of May third, 2020. Second, Ms. Ann Cervantes as a City Treasurer, tax collector, for a term of three years with an expiration day of May third, 2020. Both of those will be sent to appointments-
Have we referred to the Appointments Committee?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send both communications to the Appointments Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Other communications, we have one from Fitchburg Police Department Sergeant Derek Sullivan regarding process for removing regulatory signage in reference to petition forty-five seventeen. They're requested to review all no right turn sign locations and remove those that are unnecessary, Counselors, that was in your packet. And I understand that Sergeant Sullivan is ready and willing to speak with the Public Safety Committee at a later time if so necessary. Moving to the agenda, first before us is Board of Health, yes, Board of Health meeting of April sixth, item thirty-four seventeen, Vincent Poussetterie the second to establish and order an ordinance, zoning ordinance, chapter one eighty-one, new section one eighty-one fifty-six, promoting economic development by permitting mobile food truck operations in the city of Fitchburg be amended as attached. Counselors, not only is the report in your packet, we'll have an opportunity to speak at the hearing at that time, simply asking for a motion to accept.
We'll accept each report.
I have a motion and second to accept. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. City Property Committee, Counselor Joseph.
City Property Committee met last Tuesday, April eleventh. We had three items on the agenda, forty-three seventeen, Attorney Vincent Poussetterie, City Solicitor to authorize and approve this Fitchburg Airport Commission to accept as gift purchase or to take by eminent domain under the authority granted Mass General Law, chapter ninety, section fifty-one G, Mass General Law, section seventy-nine in Fitchburg, ordinance section three, one seventy-four, as well as any other statute or ordinance provided for such acceptance, purchase, or taking permit easement over certain parcels of land and lemons that are required for evasion easement for the Fitchburg Airport as specifically described in the petition. That was granted four to zero. Seventy-six seventeen, order of eminent domain, Summer Street, North Street Improvement Project, Summer Street, John Fitch Highway, Ray Ave, Shelley Ave, as outlined in the enclosed order, was approved, granted four to zero. Seventy-eight seventeen, Calvin Brooks, Treasurer, to declare the following properties as access and design, designate them on the side yard sales program, what, zero Westminster Hill Road, forty-eight Hartwell Ave, one-ten Blossom Street, zero Hazel Street, one-thirty-three Mechanic Ave. The petition was amended to remove one-ten Blossom Street and granted as amended. Passed four to zero.
Motion to approve City Property Committee's report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the City Property Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Finance Committee, Counselor Deenatali.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance, on April eleventh, four items were taken up, all adopted and granted unanimously. First one being approving the expenditure of funds from a grant from the state of Massachusetts for twenty thousand for an economic strategic development plan. Fifty-nine seventeen was adopted for eight, nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to be taken from free cash available funds and credited to DPW highway, general expenses, right-of-way takings for the purposes of paying damages incurred by constituents and property owners in connection with the Summer Street, North Street Row Improvement Project. Sixty seventeen appropriating twenty-five thousand to be charged against available funds and credited to law expenses, litigation, and special counsel for paying expenses for an attorney in connection with the city's insurance claim for loss due to the fire at BF Brown. And seventy-nine seventeen, Robert Lancyani, Building Commissioner, to update building department fees by adding to chapter ninety-four dash one a series of items, including ten dollars per panel for solar, including the building and electrical permits as outlined in the enclosed petition.
Motion to accept the Finance Committee report? Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Planning Board, meeting of March sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, thirty-four seventeen, Vincent Poussetterie the second to establish and order an ordinance, zoning ordinance, chapter one eighty-one, new section one eighty-one fifty-six, promoting economic development by permitting food truck operations in the city of Fitchburg, and they voted in favor.
Motion to accept the Planning Board's recommendation. Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Planning Board's recommendation. Speaking to the motion-
On the motion?
Counselor Boishman.
I got one question, Pr. Schuessler. On this thing that we passed, when I mentioned about the ice cream trucks, are they still going to be allowed to go up and down the streets of the city of Fitchburg?
Yes.
All right, I'm in favor.
I have a motion and seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Public Safety Committee oral report, Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The meeting is held tonight, six PM, three petitions in front of us. Petition zero four-nine dash seventeen, Councilor Dean Tran and Councilor Angela Beazell to identify options for a safer polling location for traffic and pedestrians to replace the current Ward five polling location, which is at the Mart Intermodal Station. That petition was, is going to be amended as follows. Councilor Dean Tran and Councilor Angela Beazell to identify options for a safer polling location for traffic and pedestrians to take steps to ensure pedestrian safety with signage. Again, that was passed as amended. Zero five-one seventeen, Councilor Jill Caddy and Young Jin to create an entrance to independent cleaners located at One Wallace Ave in Fitchburg. That was held and going to be sent to the DPW for recommendations for an engineering study. Petition zero five-two dash seventeen, Councilor Jill Caddy to explore the possibility and effect of opening fifth mass turnpike from Rollstone Road West to Oak Hill Road. That was going to be sent to the mayor's office for further exploration and to send to the state officials to move forward on that project.
Will the Committee's report be accepted? Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee oral report. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
Just, I believe that we passed fifty-two seventeen and was sending it to the mayor's office.
I believe Counselor Joseph is correct.
Correct, yes, so that, we were in favor of that.
Yeah.
In favor, thank you.
I have a mo, thank you, Counselor Joseph, for that correction. I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee oral report. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On that motion, I thought we mentioned too that the mayor was going to send a letter to the Transportation Department saying that we need a connector, we can't fool around any longer. It's time that they get off the High House down in Boston and start looking at Central Mass. So, that's what I am asking. Right, ma'am?
Right, Counselor.
Thank you.
I think your, your communication request was received by the mayor. I have a motion and second-
Hard as working counselor.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Hearings, zero eighty-four seventeen, Cumberland Farms Inc. to amend an existing license for the underground storage of flammables and combustibles at four seventy-nine Electric Avenue as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. I'd ask the person representing the petition to be seated at the center table. If you'd kindly introduce yourselves by, by name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Attorney Poussetterie. I'm Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Beacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of Cumberland Farms and its application for an amendment to an existing underground storage tank license for the property at the corner of Rollstone Road and Electric Avenue in Fitchburg. Currently, there are three underground storage tanks, each containing eight thousand gallons of gasoline. The proposal in front of you this evening is for an additional eight thousand gallons of gasoline and an additional eight thousand gallons of diesel, so for a total of thirty-two thousand gallons of gasoline and eight thousand gallons of diesel, or forty thousand gallons of flammables and combustibles to be stored underground. The proposal is for two twenty thousand gallon underground storage tanks, currently there are three, which comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. You may be aware that there was a proposal and approvals for that proposal for a four thousand nine hundred and fifty-six square foot retail convenience store with six automobile filling stations or twelve fueling positions at that site. We're actually looking to acquire an adjacent parcel and to construct on that site. With me this evening, Phil Henry from Civil Design Group, the civil engineer at the project, and he can touch on anything I missed or answer any questions that you've got.
At this time, I'll open it up to questions or comments from Counselors. Counselor Green.
How quickly is this project slated to be started?
I think we'd be looking October of this year to start, or next spring. I think it depends on a few things.
Have you actually acquired the property next door?
Not yet, we have not acquired it yet.
Okay.
It is under contract, though.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
Have you been speaking with the city's engineers about the roundabout that's going to take place?
Yes.
Come to agreement?
When you say come to an agreement-
With their design, which must affect you.
Yeah, I think, and not to speak out of term, but I think we've seen the design, we're aware of it, we've designed our site accordingly as far as entrances, proximity to the round of out, and just its effect on our site, on this proposed site.
Did the chief of the fire department sign off on the flammable liquids?
He did.
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor.
Just a brief response to Counselor Caddy's question. Cumberland Farms has been working with the city very closely on this project since October of two thousand and sixteen, and most recently met with the mayor, Commissioner of DPW, Mr. Laxo, myself, Counselor Boishman, and not only this gentleman, but another engineer-
No representative from Cumberland Farms.
Representative from Cumberland Farms. And we made some improvements most recently to the project on some engineering. They have already graciously moved their first entranceway, we've been calling it the east entranceway, further from the rotary, and made some additional adjustments regarding their parking lot to help promote traffic flow and safety for our constituents. So, we were very happy, I think both parties were very happy with the result of that meeting. So, all of the design work, we have agreements on.
Correct.
Any further questions from Counselors?
I'd be remiss if I didn't note your fine work of the city solicitor in getting us to this point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further questions from Counselors at this time? Thank you. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
Will eighty-four seventeen be approved? Second.
I have a motion and second to approve eighty-four seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those, Counselor Boishman.
I just want to wish these young men good luck in their job, and we'll hope to see you very soon with some good results. Thank you very much.
And I would add to that to thank both you and your clients for working with the city of Fitchburg to continue, continue doing business here in our city. I have a motion and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda also, a hearing is thirty-four seventeen, Vincent Poussetterie the second to establish and order an ordinance, zoning ordinance, chapter one eighty-one, new section one eighty-one fifty-six, promoting economic development by permitting mobile food truck operations in the city of Fitchburg. Hope that's the last time on this agenda that I have to read that same item. I declare the hearing open.
Triggy's going to present.
I love that.
He's standing in for me. He's a better public speaker than I am.
I don't know about that.
Mr. Triggy, can you clarify, is this document any different from the one that appeared in our packet?
We will, yes.
Okay.
We absolutely will. Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, Counselors. I hope you all enjoy the long weekend. Before you this evening is the petition for the food trucks. This is part of the mayor's initiative to make a more welcoming community for the food truck industry. This has been reviewed, reviewed by our department head, certainly our food inspector who's here with us tonight, Stephanie Holinko. This is Ian Murray, he is the chairman of the Board of Health, and as you all know, Ms. Mary Jo Bohart, our Economic Development Director. The Planning Board and the Board of Health have submitted their recommendations to you this evening. Over the course of the past few days, actually, we have compiled their recommendations that you received and have placed them into an amendment that I have respectfully submitted to your body just now. This is an all-encompassing approach, including the flexibility to cater the food truck operation and allows department heads to review the safety, location, and cleanliness of the operation. So, we're asking that you accept the amendment with a favorable vote, and we are more than welcome to take any questions that you may have.
Counselor Joseph.
I just have a comment, I mean, it's long overdue. I mean, these, these are things that are existing everywhere, there's some really creative food trucks out there that people are doing a really good job at what they do, and I'm sure there's some really bad food trucks out there, this'll also help that, but I mean, for just, just because of no place being by right, there was never really any places that food trucks could go, and people had to jump through hoops, extreme hoops, just to get, to make a living doing something that is, should be permitted in certain areas. So, I'm glad that you've done this work, I'm glad that you're going to protect the citizens of Fitchburg with good food quality, okay, and good food health, so I think this is, like, it's long overdue, and I think it's something that will attract more business to Fitchburg, and it'll help the people that are in Fitchburg have other choices to eat.
Counselor Green.
I see on here that mobile food operation may operate in residential districts without special permit from the Planning Board. They would apply for what, a one-day special license if they wanted to operate one day in a residential area that would not normally be considered food truck enabled?
So, we were considering some of the mobile food operations who may want to provide catering to private events on private property. We're treating it very similar to a catering company coming into someone's driveway to set up a catering operation in someone's backyard for a birthday party or something. So, all they would have to do is, and it's one day, like, temporary food permit, but they wouldn't have to go and get a special permit to operate. We're also considering, like, block parties, just one-day special events that may be in a residential area. We wouldn't want to put them through Planning Board for a one-day, you know, event or semi-public or private event.
Right, thank you. I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and again, I will reiterate, Counselor Joseph, is that we are long overdue with this, so, you know, bring on the food trucks. I hope that there are food trucks waiting for, to be issued permits as of tomorrow, so I hope that we have stakeholders that are vested into it, ready to go.
We have pending permits that I want to issue tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, I just want to concur with what Counselor Joseph said, long overdue. I do know people that invested a substantial amount of money to try and open up a business in Fitchburg, couldn't do it, went to a neighboring community and did it almost immediately, and I want to comment that Counselor Boishman has been talking about ice cream, because he has been an experienced ice cream vendor in the city for a few years, so he still wants to make sure that's covered, too. I thought I recognized him. Yeah.
Counselor Deenatali.
Can you give me the Cliff Notes version of what this is changing? Does this mean that they don't have to have a bathroom?
That, so I'll let, I'll let the Board of Health-
I hope the answer is yes.
The city solicitor wants to jump in here, right?
The Cliff Notes version is, we've changed the zoning, we're permitting it in most districts, and we're restricting it in the residential districts, except for that one-day discussion that you heard our Board of Health representative, Stephanie, have with Counselor Green.
Weren't there code restrictions, though? Like, you have to have a-
The sanitary code.
Exactly.
The, the interpretation of the sanitary code that we have with our Board of Health at this point, it did not require a substantial change in, in that, nor could we change sanitary code. So, I think what we have is a more progressive and more hands-on Board of Health, and I think, I'd like to take a minute to, just to thank Stephanie, she did a lot of work on drafting this ordinance and educating us on what is actually required and what is not required by the state, state code of health.
So, so when I, when I got complaints from prospective food truck operators, one of the complaints was about the sanitary codes, where there had to be access to a bathroom? Am I, am I not understanding that correctly?
There has to be access to a bathroom for hand washing.
No, I mean, if you are, if you're not in a permanent spot, and as you can see in the different definition, if you're in one location for less than forty days, I don't, I mean, bathrooms, I mean, that's really a building code thing, but as far as mobile food operations, I don't know of a requirement that requires-
I didn't think so.
I mean, we have, I have the state, I follow the state sanitary code, and I don't want to make things harder than the state at the local level, so that's the minimum, and we don't need any stricter requirements here than the sanitary code. So, I would, I've permitted many mobile food trucks in other communities, and I've never considered restrooms.
Okay, good, I just, maybe they were misinformed, I don't know, but I'm glad that's the answer.
But, but I don't know if there's additional, I wonder if Duffy would be able to explain if there's anything else.
I think that's just a good example of, we have a new person here helping us interpret the state sanitary code, and we're going to move forward and not keep it in the-
This is, this is good news, because we are, we are our own worst enemy, and since we're already following state building codes and health codes, you know, the state, you know, the geniuses at Beacon Health, they know it all, so they've already got us covered, so good thing we're not going to add on top of their brilliance, thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
The name I said this was long overdue. I've been involved in many civic events and, over the years, and it's been an awful struggle.
Going to other cities and other states, it's happening everywhere. For some reason, I want to thank the mayor, because I know he was pushing this really hard, but you're, you're going to make the people that are civically involved in this city very, very happy with this ordinance, and I hope tomorrow morning you get every one of those signed.
I'll just add on the, Stephanie, to something you just said, you know, nothing short of delighted to hear you talk about, you know, we don't want to make things more complicated than they need to be, and I think in the city for years and decades, perhaps, we found ways to do exactly that, and I think it's refreshing for those coming in from the outside and those who have been in the city for decades at a time to hear that change of tone, and to hear that the city is ready and willing and open to working with them. Certainly, we never want to compromise our standards and compromise safety standards, but we also have to find ways to work with people and also provide the public what they've been asking for, 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 again, decades, so it's exciting to, it's exciting to see, so I'd like to thank, though, the Planning Board, but even more particularly the Board of Health for their due diligence here. I know you never get to be rock stars and walk in and talking about sanitary code, but someone needs to do it, and it's an important aspect of these considerations, so thanks for all your due diligence. Counselor Deenatali.
I just want to be remiss if I didn't give credit, too, to what you said, because it's a breath of fresh air. Far too long, we've been going above and beyond what our code requirements are. A lot of things are subject to interpretation, so it shouldn't be interpreted to the public that we're relaxing the codes, we're just following the minimum, well, the standards that is set across the state and not adding any additional burdens on top of that that are unnecessary that other cities and towns do not adopt that we do, therefore making us non-competitive. So, I hope that this is a start. I'm sure there's other areas of our internal code that make things a lot more difficult for any other items in this city with regards to development or economics, so I hope this is a start, I hope we branch out into other areas. I hope we don't stop here, is what I'm saying, so, thank you.
And we don't have any stricter local Board of Health ordinances, we haven't additional requirements for mobile food trucks currently, we never have.
Hmm?
So, but-
Sounds to me like it wasn't so much, it wasn't the Board of Health restrictions, it was more the zoning restrictions, so-
Yeah, and once-
And definitions.
And once again, we, a big part of the approval is the Board of Health approval, but there are other approvals, just like in every, you know, other town and city, where they have a say in, in the final approval.
It was a general comment to encompass all code enforcement agencies outside of Board of Health, building especially. If there are other areas, we can relax at another time, I hope we don't stop here, because quite frankly, if the state has standards, we should just abide by those standards and not impose any additional ones that are unnecessary. So, that's just my two cents on that, thank you.
Counselor Beazell.
Thank you, I can't say enough about this, and I think this is one of those step forwards where, you know, you can actually be a partner, the Board of Health can be a partner with- The Board of Health can be a partner with food service in the city, and every community I ever was in, operating in, we've always saw it like a partnership, like the Board of Health is there to help you do business correctly, and those are the things I think that we're seeing here, is, I can see a partnership forming, which is fantastic, so, thank you.
Counsel Boishman.
I got one question. Not one question, let me tell you. To clarify something here for me, because I, I understand mobile food, but is this going to have an impact on people that own farms and comes down and transport their fruits and vegetables to a certain location, as you say, forty days? So, Ray Harper, John Beach Highway, has, yeah, I know, he passed away, so, he has a stand there, and he transports food to that stand, and he's there longer than forty days. So, how, what kind of an impact would that have on those kind of businesses? Because you know why I ask all these questions? Counsel Donnelly's right. I sold ice cream, and I also sold from the back of my truck, and I drove up and down the city streets with fruits and vegetables. I would ring a bell and stop, and the people would come out, and they would buy tomatoes, apples, cucumbers, and strawberries and everything else. It was a heck of a lot of work, so I gave it up, because it was a lot of work, but I did that. So, what kind of impact would that have on these kind of people that want to try that kind of business, and they're going up and down the streets? Vinnie?
I think the definition of mobile food operation is a mobile food service operation, and that, and I would ask Stephanie the question, that is cooked or prepared foods for human consumption?
No, it could be prepackaged foods also, but we'd have to look at it case-by-case, because a lot of these farm products are under farm stand exemptions, where you wouldn't need to obtain a permit, such as eggs and fresh produce would be exempt. We'd have to look at this case-by-case. But, are you talking about an actual truck where they're selling food outside, or out of the truck, like, produce?
Back when I was younger, I made, I had a pickup truck, and I made a roof over it, and I had shelves on the truck, and I had ice, and we put the armages, apples, cucumbers, summer squash, chicaney, all the fruits and vegetables on that truck, and I would drive up and down the streets really, really slow, and I would put them on, and people would literally come out and buy.
Counsel Boishman, it's a delight that I am to hear your story. I believe she gave, she gave an answer. Did that fully answer your question?
Oh, well, yeah.
It's a review on a case-by-case.
Well, she asked me what kind, and I'm telling her what I did. So, that's what I did. And I sold it from the back of my truck, and then I would pull over.
See, Happy Bray gave it away for free. That was a good question, too.
We'll do everything we can to get people permitted, and we'll work with them, and I work closely with Mary Jo. If people have new business proposals, we'll work with them, we'll make it happen, and...
All right. All right, thank you.
Counsel Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's where the qualifications come in. Counsel, did you have a farming permit or an ice cream permit? I mean, I don't know if we can mix them up together, but...
I want to know if the ice was made from potable water.
If there are no other questions or comments from the councilors, I'd ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing none. I declare the hearing closed.
Motion to pass thirty-four seventeen.
I have a motion and second to approve thirty-four seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you, councilors.
Counselors, I know Solicitor Pousatieri will be working diligently to get this ordinance in front of us to fast, as quickly as possible.
Then they had to transfer.
Returning to the agenda, lone order zero eighty-five seventeen. Does this need to be read?
Motion to send eighty-five seventeen to finance.
I have a motion and second to send zero eighty-five seventeen to finance, speaking to the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Will be sent to finance.
Motion to send...
Orders, finance. Zero eighty-six seventeen. Order that there be in here...
Move eighty-six seventeen through ninety-one seventeen, be sent to finance.
Second. Second.
Counsel, was there one that was supposed to be withheld?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, what, exclude ninety seventeen?
So, I have a motion and second to send eighty-six seventeen up to and including ninety-one seventeen, excluding ninety seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Zero ninety seventeen.
Move ninety seventeen, be given leave to withdraw.
Second.
I have a motion and second to give zero ninety seventeen leave to withdraw, speaking to the motion. This was just a clerical error on the, the exact amount of the order, so we'll see a new order coming back before us to reflect the appropriate amount.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Orders, other. Zero ninety-two seventeen, ordered that the city agrees to purchase energy from Loadstar Energy LLC as outlined in enclosed order, reference petition forty-four sixteen. Zero ninety-three seventeen, ordered that the city agrees to accept payments in lieu of personal property taxes for two twenty-five Industrial Fitchburg Solar LLC as outlined in the enclosed order, reference petition forty-four seventeen. And zero ninety-four seventeen, ordered that the city agrees to accept payment in lieu of personal property taxes from Fitchburg Solar LLC, Bruce and Angela Willard, as outlined in the enclosed order, reference petition forty-four seventeen. Counselors, I just bring your attention to zero ninety-two seventeen, that was reference petition forty-four seventeen, so that's incorrectly references petition sixteen.
Do we require suspension of the rules to pass these?
This does not require suspension of the rules to...
I don't think so. This is an order. It's before you. I guess you could refer it if you want, or you could move on it.
Motion for suspension of the rules on ninety-two seventeen up to and including ninety-four seventeen.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on ninety-two up to and including ninety-four seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ninety-two up to and including ninety-four seventeen over for you.
Motion to approve ninety-two seventeen, ninety-three seventeen, and ninety-four seventeen.
Speak.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve ninety-two up through and including ninety-four seventeen. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Green.
On ninety-two seventeen, Loadstar Energy is going to be providing electricity or as a gas alternative?
Electricity. Electricity.
To every resident in the city of Fitchburg, or the ones that buy into...
To the city of Fitchburg. The city of Fitchburg will be the consumer under a power purchase agreement. The agreement is between Loadstar and the city of Fitchburg.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And, councilors, I just call your attention, these are, these are orders that corresponded to the petitions that were passed this most recent council meeting, and they had gone through the city property.
Finance.
Finance. I have a, speaking to the motion, Counsel Boishman.
One question for the city solicitor. Is this a twenty-year deal with this Lone Star? That's a twenty-year deal, is it? Yes, it is.
Mr. Trigney, Loadstar's twenty years, right?
Sorry, sir?
Loadstar is a twenty-year...
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I have a motion and second to approve ninety-two up to and including ninety-four seventeen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The order carries. Motion carries. Ordinance, ordinance is zero seventy-seven seventeen, an ordinance to amend chapter one sixty-nine twenty-four of the Code of the City of Fitchburg to remove on-street parking on both sides of Pearl Street between North Street and Highland Avenue as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition two eighty-four sixteen. Final reading.
Motion to send seventy-seven seventeen to its final reading, ordained, have...
Enrolled and advertised.
Yeah, enrolled and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send zero seventy-seven seventeen to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Zero ninety-five seventeen, an ordinance amending chapter forty-four, section ten of the Code of the City of Fitchburg, as most recently amended by adding thereto the following step assignments, first reading. Counsel Dina Tally. I will, I will just add, councilors, for the purposes of, these need to be sent, you also saw our corresponding order to finance. We'll have an opportunity to vet this through finance. We can either hold, we could hold these. I would recommend that we probably send it to its first reading. We can, we can hold or deny it at a future and subsequent reading, if need be, if we have concerns. Through finance.
I make the motion we hold it.
Counsel, I had a question from Counsel Dina Tally.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm yet finished speaking. Counsel Dina Tally, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Did he have a question?
I was sentencing an impending question.
Are these union agreements?
I'm going to have Mr. Trigney to speak on these.
We can vet it out in finance. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not voting for any of these yet. I just...
They can't, they can't be held correct.
Hey, Jay, we spoke with the auditor, acting auditor, about holding these, and we made a determination to put them on the agenda. Was there a time concern that she had?
Other than the, the ordinance have to also reflect with the appropriations, so it was a parallel move.
It'll have budget implications for the following year, but certainly, they can be, they can be tabled for the time being, if councilors feel more at ease.
Motion to table ninety-five seventeen up to and including ninety-seven seventeen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to table ninety-five up to and including ninety-seven seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Petitions?
Move ninety-eight seventeen, be sent to a public hearing on June twentieth and to the planning board.
I have a motion and second to send ninety-eight seventeen to the city council public hearing on June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, and to the planning board. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move ninety-nine seventeen through one oh three seventeen, be sent to their respective committees.
Motion and second to send ninety-nine seventeen up to and including one oh three seventeen to their respective committees.
Mr. President.
Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boishman.
On one oh two dash seventeen, can we also make note that the economic developer, Mary Jo Bohart, go and talk to the different businesses down there on Lunberg Street on one oh two dash seventeen?
Are you asking for that to be referred to the Economic Development Committee or to the Economic Development Director?
The director.
With the person, with the council who made the petition be amenable to, including that recommendation? Who made the...
Counsel Tran.
Counsel Tran, are you amenable?
I made the motion, I explained.
Okay. I have a motion and second to send ninety-nine seventeen up to and including one oh three seventeen to their respective committees, including one oh two seventeen to the Economic Development Director. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. And we have one tabled item, councilor, zero thirty-three seventeen, an ordinance amending chapter one eighty-one twenty-three of the Code of the City of Fitchburg zoning map by changing certain parcels on Bemis Road from industrial zoning district to central business district, reference petition two to twenty-one sixteen. Counselors, I've just been asked by this original petitioner if we could remain as tabled, pending one, one last communication. I've asked for this to be resolved in the later municipal council meeting.
Move here, John.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. I would just like to thank those folks, I'd like to thank the Veterans Office yesterday for putting on a wonderful Patriots' Day ceremony and five K race, and I'd like to thank those who, not only who ran, but who volunteered throughout the day at the Patriots' Day five K. So, thanks to all of those who gave their time and their efforts to that effort. I have a move, announcement, Counsel Donnelly.
Not necessarily an announcement. I don't know who to talk to or complain. Unitil is going to do, how many feet or miles of new gas pipe in the city, was in the paper the other day. Fitchburg State, Fitchburg State University is going to be getting out sometime in May. There's thousands of people driving there every day. Seems like they're starting in that particular location. They waited till the end of May or June. Those thousands of students and teachers and every deliveries and everything else that has to be there, there wouldn't be any congestion. So, I don't know if city planning, Unitil planning, or just plain lack of planning might have to do with all that congestion. I just want to get it out. It's frustrating to watch, the lack of planning. Thank you.
Your point is well taken, a communication can be sent to Unitil and CC, the university. I have a motion and sec... Mayor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also thank the department heads that worked diligently on the food truck petition and the issue, not the least of which was the city solicitor, but my chief